Meeting of the county commission. I'd like to ask Commissioner Rawlins to give the implication to be followed by the political allegiance.
But before we stand, you can, you can stay seated just for a moment. Uh, a, a few weeks ago, uh, there was a day set aside, I believe it was nineteen fifty-four. Uh, it was changed from Armistice Day to Veterans Day to recognize all of our veterans. I'm gonna ask all of our veterans, how many veterans do we have? If y'all would come up here and stand on the platform. I'm gonna ask each one to thank them, uh, this evening with a, a hand clap. Thank you. You can remain standing, we'll let them get seated again, uh, when that is in place. Let us pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly father, Lord, we come in prayer this evening, Lord. Lord, we thank you for all that you've done, Lord, we thank you for each blessing. And Lord, as he stood upon the stage just now, Lord, we're thankful, Lord, for each one of our veterans. Uh, Lord, we're thankful, Lord, for the ones that gave some and for the ones that gave all.
Yes.
We're thankful for them today, Lord. It's because of them that we can live in this great, great country, uh, that's free tonight. Lord, just as you came and you fought a battle for us, uh, that we could be free from sin. Uh, Lord, we're thankful for you. And I pray that you would just reach down and touch this meeting tonight, touch each one of us, or help us to use our wisdom and our knowledge, Lord, to do what's right for our county. Lord, we're thankful for our county, for our state, Lord, for our country. Lord, just touch each one, in Jesus' sweet name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pardon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Matt Corrigan.
Mr. Abbott.
Here.
Mr. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Blansett.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Cantrell.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Hargis. Mr. Holland. Mr. Mason.
Here.
Chairman Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Nunley.
Here.
Mr. Rawlins.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Approval of minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Cantrell, motion second by Commissioner Campbell, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Oppose? Approval of the November agenda?
Chairman, I'd like to table item number twenty and potentially have a workshop and I've asked Mr. Gouger to, to be involved with that to explain it.
Will you be contacting the mayor's office, Mr. Gouger, as to setting up the workshop? Thank you.
Or amend, uh, the amendments.
Is there any more changes?
Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to strike, uh, agenda item twenty-one, ethics meeting topic from the agenda. We haven't, the ethics committee, we haven't met in the past few months. I'd like to have a, an ethics meeting before we have any discussion on that.
So we'll take these one at a time, any, any more?
Since number nineteen, uh, the Right the Farm Act, if I'm not mistaken, that's already state law, right Billy?
It is state law, yes sir.
And it, a lot of it has to do with the planning and zoning, so I, we, we strike it as well, till at least we have that workshop.
Okay, so let's just, uh, let's just take them in numerical order. We would start with nineteen to amend the resolution, amend the agenda to remove item nineteen from the agenda, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Oppose?
Yes.
Roll call vote please.
Mr. Abbott.
Aye.
Mr. Atkins.
Aye.
Mr. Blansett.
Aye.
Mr. Brandt.
No.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Mason. Probably gonna have workshop on that.
No.
Mi- uh, Chairman Morrison. He said the workshop.
That was about to go on.
See that one?
I'll tell you.
Yes. Aye.
Mr. Nunley.
Aye.
Mr. Rawlins.
Aye.
Mr. Schaefer.
Aye.
Well, then the resolution to strike, sorry, amend the agenda to strike, agenda number nineteen. Uh, agenda item number twenty, resolution to adopt planning and zoning authority.
She's got a little sponsor, Mr. Brandt, table, ask the table.
That's the table, you're correct, you're correct, my bad, sorry.
Apology.
So twenty-one, Dave Thompson, Ethics Committee, all in favor of striking agenda item number twenty-one?
Uh-huh.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Roll call vote please.
Mr. Abbott.
Aye.
Mr. Atkins.
Aye.
Mr. Blansett.
Aye.
Mr. Brandt.
No.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Mason.
Aye.
Chairman Morrison.
Aye.
Mr. Nunley.
Yes.
Mr. Rawlins.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
No.
Chairman?
Agenda item number twenty-one will be stricken from the agenda. Commissioner Brandt.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we, we have our first ethics meeting Monday night, is that correct? We've got a call meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner, I have Commissioner Frank.
So the public knows as far as an agenda, is there not enough information, uh, as it relates to a line item? Is that more of the problem?
I would direct that question to who made the motion to strike that from the agenda, Mr. Brandt.
Okay. And my plan is, uh, like I said, it's, uh, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting, ethics meeting, and I'd like to have another committee meeting before we discuss it.
Only, only concern I have is, you know, if the public wants to speak about a topic, this may have nothing to do about what's going on related to, in a, in a investigation, can't talk about that anyhow.
Correct.
But I think the public should have a right to get up here and, and speak, so.
And I put, and I think that they will have that. I think he's wanting to establish, get a meeting under the belt.
No, I understand that.
And then, so I, I don't think anybody's been deprived of that, it's just a timing issue. Commissioner Schaefer?
It's been six months since this was brought to light, and I think that we need to start moving on this quickly instead of dragging our feet.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Public comments? Need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. That would be striking nineteen twenty-one, tabling twenty. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Oppose?
Next.
Roll call vote please.
Mr. Abbott.
Aye.
Mr. Atkins.
Aye.
Mr. Blansett.
Yes.
Mr. Brandt.
No.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Mason.
Aye.
Chairman Morrison.
Aye.
Mr. Nunley.
Aye.
Mr. Rawlins.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
No.
Agenda item number seven. Public comments, Mike Reeves?
Since you struck the two that I was gonna speak about, did I speak out loud or not?
Yes, sir.
The only thing I'd like to say, like I said, they have been carried over. Number one, we need to figure out some way that, or you do, not me, but, or us. Do you need to figure out some way where the public can find the times of these workshops? Whether it be on the web or whatever, uh... I was standing back there just a minute ago, and I heard Commissioner Abbott say something about a meeting Monday, but I, the, the time kind of fa- kind of faded out. So, and I'm not throwing stones, but believe me, I just think that we have gone long enough that we need to be able to go somewhere on the web, find out when these workshops are, where we can go. Because fifteen individuals up there represent people of this county. And we need to know what's going on, not throwing stones. This is like we've got two TVs in here, I don't understand why we don't have the agendas up on those instead of handing out pieces of paper. Uh, it's two thousand twenty-five. We just, you know, and, and we'll throw stones at things that don't, but yet we don't, we don't want to in, in, inform the public. That's just like I can go to the web and look up the agenda for today. It'll, well, right there it is, there's no information there of where it's, what it's about. There's nothing on the web about what it's about. It'll say so-and-so, Right the Farm Act. Don't have a clue. Don't have a clue in what, what that is. Spent two hours this afternoon researching, Right the Farm Act, which was passed in nineteen eighty-two. It's a code emetator. We just need to look at these things in the next month. It's not that hard to screen, it's not that hard to put something on the web. I know that working for the school system, if we have an item to put on the agenda, we have to give a summary to the board members. Why can't that be put on there where we know exactly what's gonna be talked about? I mean, uh, it's progress, and it's where we're in to know. And I've been where you're at, and it's not an easy job. You need straight to the imagination. But we need to know a little more than what's on these, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Can I have a word, is that instructive? No?
No, sir. But, Mr. Reeves has signed up on the public comment sheet.
Thank you.
Budget amendments, agenda item number eight, budget amendments, Marion County Board of Government, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, mostly budget amendments and ones y'all reviewed at the workshop concerning the trustee's office, mechanic clerk's office, including the general fund, except for the two top ones, uh, and these have been approved and recommended by the finance committee, uh, hiring a, another building inspector to start training our gates. Just turned sixty, and another clerical person in that office. This will not be, does not use pocket tax dollars to pay for this, revenue that's generating that office will pay for this increase in cost. That's the budget amendments we have.
How old would you say?
He just turned sixty.
I know. I don't think he's about to turn seventy-three here at this point.
Happy birthday. Motion to approve budget amendments.
So moved. Say again.
Commissioner Atkins with the motion, we have the second on the way. Commissioner Schaefer with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Budget amendments, Marion County Board of Education, Dr. Griffith just notified me, he was here, he had to leave, he had an emergency, asked that his items be tabled, so we're gonna entertain a motion on that. Mr. Blansett, second by Commissioner Campbell, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Budget amendments, Marion County Highway Department, Mr. Pickett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Agenda item number eleven, approved bid, South Pittsburgh Waterline Project, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, we opened bids, uh, Thursday afternoon, two o'clock. You have a letter recommendation for Stan Engineering Company. The low bid was, uh, Vaniski Communications, uh, engineering companies checked them out. Excuse me, they've done waterline stuff in the past, uh, and all their bid numbers looked good, so, uh, our engineer recommends we accept a low bid of eight hundred seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars to put this line in.
Mayor, um, I was just looking at bidder number one, and it was six hundred and sixteen eight thousand dollars, let's just say six hundred and sixty-nine difference. And then the next, the lowest bid that was close to theirs was a hundred and thirty-three thousand, we'll just say a hundred and thirty-four thousand. These guys have great errors in mission insurance.
They'll be bonded, they'll have bonded, they'll sign the contract.
Thank you for doing this, too.
Intervene a motion to accept.
Motion.
It's Commissioner Franklin with the motion, second by Commissioner Brandt, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda item number twelve, approved bid and resolution, South Pittsburgh Kimball Waterline Project, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This money, uh, to fund this, is the, uh, TDEC non-compated grant money and plus, uh, a little five hundred something thousand dollars from the town of Kimball and the city of South Pittsburgh to pay the match. Uh, we had, uh, six bidders, low bid with Rev Construction out of Tuscaloosa, Alabama, one million, five hundred nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. You have a letter here from Core Engineering, uh, recommend that we accept that low bid from Rev. Once we do, once y'all approve this bid, then we've got a resolution that to approve this. This has to go through TDEC and Orange and Young, so need to approve the bid and approve the res- resolution separately.
Intervene a motion to...
So moved.
Mr. Schaefer?
Say again.
Second by Commissioner Campbell.
Sir, if I may comment?
Mr. Franklin.
On, on what, like what was asked earlier, there's such a discrepancy from a million to two million and something on the bids. I think, if I remember right, in our utility meeting on this, they have their own boring machine for going underneath the road, okay? And it saved them four or five hundred thousand dollars on the bid, so that's why they were lower. And I presume on, I think on the other one, there was some equipment they had, which they were able to go lower on the bid. I just wanted to point that out, sir, because it was brought up, and everyone needs to know that's why it was chosen, I guess.
Thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is just a redundancy type project. Just to kind of be prepared, I think the line is under the label Lake Kimball down there, so this will go around that in case something happens, just redundancy. Okay, I need a, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution that's included with this. Do we have a vote on that, on the first one?
No.
Okay, we did have a motion to second, we did have, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Apologies. Now, entertain a motion to approve the resolution, that's what it says. Commissioner Campbell?
So moved.
Commissioner Rawlins with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda item number thirteen, Mr. You, Mr. Franklin, approved change order to jail expansion project, Mr. Mayor.
All I can say, and you don't want me to say it, okay? Every time we turn around, there's a change order. This is the state requiring this. It's not something that we're doing just to, or to spend taxpayer dollars. The state comes in and says, you need this. I hope whoever is representing, argues a little bit with them, but you're not gonna win with the state, so that's why this change order is here.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Franklin is correct, this is due to the Fire Marshal's Office, also, not only do we have a Fire Marshal's Office expecting this, we also have the State Department of Corrections coming in to see what's going, uh, going on over. Come by today, we're seeing the huge crank, it's set to the second floor, floor end. This change order is in amount of sixty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, and this consists of additional fire-rated smoke, uh, comfort, confrontation, uh, in the vicinity of the control room, uh, additional smoke barriers to separate cell blocks, uh, requirement of existing, uh, main controller in the jail be fire-rated. So we didn't have all this when built a jail back in two thousand. These changes are associated work, such as changing doors, hardware, additional fire, uh, stopping, uh, mechanism, uh, system, change, et cetera, uh, rating, uh, some of the exterior doors, additional, uh, rail on the roof. Protect somebody from falling if you're in front of it on the roof, as we need. So, again, this is not something the agent, agent here at Arctech, excuse me, are the contractors come up with. This is all from the State Fire Marshal's Office, that we were prior to us to do this.
Intervene a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Abbott, second by Commissioner Blansett, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda item number fourteen, approved resolution moving county clerk and county trustee offices to general fund budget, Mr. Mayor.
County attorney.
County attorney, sorry, Mr. Gouger.
I'll, I'll address it. Mr. Chairman, um, as the commission members know from the workshop we had last week, um, with the county clerk and the county trustee in attendance, uh, the resolution you had before you would change those two offices from fee-based offices to general fund offices. And that's, that's what this resolution does, and it will be effective if you all adopt it on January first of two thousand twenty-six. And, um, a portion of the budget amendments that you all have already approved tonight is designed to accommodate the additional, uh, cost out of the general fund that will go toward this change, and where all those funds will be supplemented by the revenue stream coming from the fees that are gonna be generated and turned over to the general fund by these two offices.
That's good, cover that workshop.
So we're only talking about this month and next month, is that right, as far as there being a, that revenue stream will cover? Covers the budget, we're not diving into the general fund. Not until, well, essentially you are, but, but it's being replaced, the expenditures are being replaced by revenue that will be generated. Probably do office deals for county. It should be turned to fee trustee monthly instead of quarterly, so. Motion to approve? Say.
Mr. Atkins, second by Commissioner Cantrell, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number fifteen, approved members of Marion County Library Board, Mr. Mayor.
Chairman, you have a list there in front of you, uh, to the points of Marion County Library Board. Sharon Yager, Lynn English, Robert Kelly, Bill Stewart, Sharon Case, Henry Lodge, Commissioner Steve Franklin, lead county representatives, and the city of South Pittsburgh has appointed their representative as Kelly Nelson, and the city of Wilt was appointed Rochelle Davis to be their, or, to the board.
Questions?
I make the motion, we table that, and we need a workshop over. We need to get this board on, so we'll get the money for that. You got a board already that's active, till this board gets appointed. Second?
Mr. Blansett, and second by Commissioner Brandt, to table.
Help me understand this, we've been holding off on this for... Who's been holding, we have. Okay, we don't have, we do have a board in place, but we don't have... A board took place, until you're reappointed. I'm confused about the purpose of the workshop. We're replacing the old library board, which was made up of three different library boards, with representatives from the two that are remaining. That's correct. Okay. So why would we want to have the correct representatives from the two remaining library boards? I'm calling those signs. You want to discuss it, or you want to vote? Just have a question about that. Just have a vote. Discuss, but, but, yeah, I just need to understand better. We've constituted two new library boards. We've been doing this for a year now. There's a question of, the, the way the library board was structured before, it was three, three, and three. Now, a question on whether one of them is reappointed on the board, as they set up for three years. What, from what I understand, if I'm wrong, tell me. Well, then, if they, if you reappoint this one member, I don't know, then they're not, they're not three-year term? Is there almost three-year term or not? As you know, Mr. Blansett, the, both the county and the city of South Pittsburgh are represented by special, like independent special legal counsel. And I, I didn't go over the names with those two attorneys, but I did go over their methodology in determining the composition of the new board. So you say it's right? I don't know, I, I, I wasn't... You don't know? I wasn't a part of that. Attorney Keith Davis said what we done is right. He and Mr. Blavens were working together on that for the, for the benefit of both the city of South Pittsburgh and the, and the county, so. Don't have a vote, they, they don't want a table, then they, they can vote, not the table.
I don't think, I mean, how long is a member, or a board member, so much to sit? That's my question.
You said two, three-year terms.
Two, three-year terms.
Limited, two, three-year terms. It's second year terms, then they have to come off for a term.
So, how long have these folks been on there?
You flip on the next page, and it's got, um, the, your term to something. Mr. Mason, I'm assuming, by the way they've structured this, that they're following the statute for the creation of a new library board, so that they'll have staggered terms. The statute gives direction on how the board is to be appointed, so that not everybody comes off at the same time or is reappointed or renewed at the same time, so that's why some are appointed initially. So... That's the way they are now, or that's the way they're? It's the way they, that's the way they've always been. And, and I'm, by the way they have, um, structured this new board, I have to assume that they're following that statute, because that's, that's what this does. They're set up on staggered terms. Correct, yes, sir. They're fine with that. That's correct.
But they, this is how they're gonna move forward, so if these folks have been there for a period of years...
Six years, if they got... No, they can't be on, uh, see, city of Wilt won't put Will Sweden back on there? They couldn't, because he just come off, served a six year. So none of these have served more than six years. These, you know, they're, they're all within a six-year period. So everybody on there, okay, as far as you know? Yeah, according to our attorneys, Attorney Davis, Attorney Blavens, they're all good what we did.
Are the, uh, are the districts or South Pittsburgh would all equally represented?
Yes. Three from each, no, actually four from each end, for the county commissioner and Commissioner Frank.
And if you're correct in what you're saying, I'll take my, I'll take that off the table, we'll vote.
And, and Mr. Gallagher, uh, for the record, you're, you've interpreted Title Ten, you know that this is all the board and correct.
I, I did review the, the specific statute with Mr. Davis and Mr. Blavens, as they were moving forward on the composition of the new board, with, with one of the former members, the town of Jasper, coming off and creating its own library board, and the cities of South Pittsburgh and Whitwell voting to stay in the county library board. It, it changed under the statute how the board was to be constituted, and, uh, so I, I do think that the way they, they have done it, uh, is in conformity with the statutory requirements, yes, sir.
So we, I may understand we reorganized the library board, is that correct?
Right, they, they had to, because the membership changed.
Because it's not reappointed or putting, just replacing, or we've restructured.
It's reconstituting the board, yes, is, is essentially what they've done.
Mr. Schaefer.
None of these appointees have served more than six years.
When we met, uh, met with Keith Davis, Henry Lodge, and Kate Milton, the stake, Tennessee, there probably was.
As long as for the record, Mr. Gallagher is saying that it's in compliance with Title Ten?
Mr. Blansett, are you saying you want to rescind your motion?
Right.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve agenda item number fifteen.
Motion to approve, I second.
Commissioner Campbell, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cantrell, second by Commissioner Campbell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Uh, agenda item number sixteen, approved sale of delinquent property, map one fifty-one, group B, parcel zero ninety-eight point zero one, Inez Road, Whiteside, Tennessee. Mr. Mayor.
Uh, part, part of task to me, and that previous, for the county commissioner may have tonight, this is piece of property off Inez Road, it's actually landlocked. Uh, Mr. Quinn owns the property all the way around it. He was able to see us on tax map, brought in a bid of six hundred and sixty dollars, sixty cents, that's taxes every dollar. And I'll refer to Mr. Campbell, what the action we voted for.
So we voted, and it's the opinion of the committee to, to go forward with this and approve it for sale.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, just one comment, if, for the record, please, the...
Yes, sir.
The identification of the parcel, the, the group B reference should not be there, it should just be map one fifty-one, parcel of ninety-eight oh one. Um, this particular parcel is in a rural area in the county, so it doesn't have group, um, designations assigned to it, so, uh, but with that correction, everything else is.
Entertain a motion to proceed with this sale?
Motion, second.
Commissioner Cantrell, second by Commissioner Schaefer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number seventeen, discuss a twenty thousand dollar one-time donation to the Marion County Food Bank. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Abbott, second by Mr. Atkins, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, I'm. My head up. Okay, agenda number eighteen, discuss December county commission meeting. Uh, I'm sure this is the December meeting that falls close to Christmas, and we're entertaining.
Typically don't have a meeting.
Typically don't have one.
It takes the commission's action to not have.
Correct. So.
I make a motion, we su- suspend the December meeting, and I'll, I'll second his motion.
Mr. Schaefer, second by Commissioner Campbell, not to have the December meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nineteen is stricken, twenty is tabled, twenty-one is stricken. Agenda item number twenty-two, approval of novaries.
Julie Drury Yard, Linda Piss, Talen, Tammy McDidlin, Rayanne Smith.
Entertain a motion to approve. Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Abbott, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-three, general business. Uh, I have an item of concern, I've been contacted about, I'm going to refer this to council, the... About, I'm going to say five years ago, before this current commission was seated, uh, we had a matter come before the commission that the old Whitwell Mountain Road, and the commission voted unanimously, I don't know if fifteen members were present or not, but declared that a public road, not a county road now, a public road. Uh, for that four-year, four-and-a-half-year time period, that road has remained blocked by property owner. Uh, myself, Mr. Pickett, receiving numerous calls, uh, questioning why the road remains blocked. No simple answer to it, I'm going to ask Mr. Gallagher if he would elaborate on that a little bit.
Well, um, I, I had some, back at that time, Mr. Chairman, I, I had some communications with, um, a couple of the property owners who, whose property is crossed by the road in question, and they had no objection to the road being open, and they, they, they now have private legal counsel, um, Attorney Thomas Austin, who then represents them, and, and I have met with and spoken to Thomas about it on a couple of occasions, actually met with one of the property owners, separately before he detained Mr. Austin. So I'd be glad to revisit that with those folks to see, because they were considering taking some private action to force, um, the opening of the road. Since that time, the property owner that had initially blocked the accessway has passed away. So I'm not certain, um, today who owns that property, if it was inherited by, by his family, or if it's, if it's now owned by some third party, but I can certainly check into that, and see who we need to talk with about resolving the issue.
Can we discuss, or you not? Public road, as far as the state of Tennessee is concerned, can it be blocked if it's deemed a public road?
Well, pu- public roads can't legally be blocked, um, doesn't stop people sometimes from blocking them anyway. Um, and if that's the situation that you're facing, then someone, whether it's the county, or whether it's private landowners, who wish to force the road to be opened, uh, will have to take some legal action. You can't, self-help is, is not a good idea, um, it sometimes results in violence, so I, I've never recommended that. In about thirty-five plus years of practicing law and doing a lot of real estate work, clients take matters into their own hands in those circumstances, because it, it frequently does, um, result in breaches of the peace, as they say.
Is it a public easement, or is it, has it been?
Public.
Has it been take, put in the road?
No, it's not a county road, no, it's a public road.
So it's a public easement?
It, well, it, it would have to be an easement, Commissioner Brandt, since we would cause, the public doesn't own the road itself, so, um, there are statutory provisions in Tennessee that distinguish between public roads and private roads. And, um, factors that courts consider in determining which category of road an easement falls in. This particular road crosses from, from the valley floor to the top of the mountain, probably five or six property owners to get from the bottom to the top, most of whom are in agreement that it is a road that should be open to the public, but obviously, at least one does not.
Apparently not, yeah. And I guess people have been using it openly and notoriously.
Road is, uh, was established, I think we determined that in that, that meeting before we were seated for probably the late eighteen sixties, early eighteen seventies. That was the primary road to the top at that time. So that's, that's how the road came, came to be, it was the only road at that time. So does the county have cause to pursue this? I know at one time we talked about, you had to have cause. Does, does the county have cause?
Well, that, that's a more difficult question to answer. You know, public roads themselves aren't necessarily subject to legal action by the county under most circumstances, but, but in this case, you know, it's worth looking into. I don't know that I have a definitive answer for that question on this road tonight.
Can you?
But certainly.
Research says so, but.
Be glad to.
Thank you.
I, I got a couple things I'd like to say. Uh, last week I attended a regional mayor's meeting, chatting with, um, Mayor Kelly, Mayor Mont, close to quarterly. One of the things that, uh, they're working on, trying to do, is to bring pasture rail back into Chattanooga, Nashville, to Chattanooga, to Chattanooga, to Atlanta, and then from, uh, Chattanooga up to Knox. Um, and they had a pretty good presentation. What they were talking about is like express train, if we come from Nashville to Chattanooga into Atlanta, using current tracks are in place. From what I understand, pasture rail has, uh, the first priority to rail, even though tracks belong to CSX, except in Georgia. They have Georgia on rail tracks in Georgia, the CSX, going from Southern, at least, to the state of Georgia. Then you have a local train that you can catch somewhere near, maybe over New Hope, that's where the main line comes through. Go to Chattanooga and come back at a certain time, uh, maybe get some cars to step off there, stay. So that's something that's being worked on, uh, the state of Tennessee fans are very interested in this, so is the state of Georgia. That's just, uh, something to put out there, that's been discussed and being, being worked on. The other thing I wanted to mention, I want to personally thank Senator Todd Gardenhire, getting P. Donald Stick, get this water line leased out, bid out of South Pittsburgh Mountain. Had not been for him, would have been, would not have been awarded the bid, and I say Senator Gardenhire, thank you for giving that down.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes. Mr. Campbell, the reason why I propose the right to farm act is, in the late sixties, early seventies, my wife and I at that time inherited a piece of property, twenty acres to farm. We had chickens and roosters and hay. They started developing around us, and in the process of developing, Ron said, wanted to buy our farm. I did not want to sell. So they presented complaints of nuisance because of the chickens and roosters, and I was taken to court. I could not continue fighting him in court, because I was only twenty-eight years old, and I didn't have a lot of money. I spent most of my money trying to get this property going. And I was forced to sell at a price that was, what I felt was below what I should have had. I want to protect our farmers here in Marion County, even though we have a state law. If we enacted locally, it gives a little more teeth to it. And that's why I'm proposing is protect our farmers from unscrupulous people coming in and trying to buy their land at a ridiculous price.
I understand that, I'm all for protecting our farmers, you know, and one of the things that we've done here, you know, like, you talk about nuisance, we voted down the County Powers Act to prevent this from happening, to prevent people from coming and saying, you know what, you got chickens, I don't like them. So we voted it down to prevent that from happening. You know, so we've got a state law that protects us from this, and we don't have any way for, like, the County Powers Act or zoning, for people to come and say, you know what, I don't like his fall. So between the state law already being there, and us not having those, I feel like that that's the reason I want it stricken, because it's already there. We went leaps and bounds, we listened to the people when it come to the County Powers Act several years ago now. They didn't want it, they didn't want people, the government, anybody telling them what they can and can't do on their own property. So I just felt like, by doing that, without those other things already being there, there really wasn't no need for it, with law already protecting it. That was just why I voted no.
Oh, that's why you struck it?
Yeah.
You didn't allow us to vote it. You took it upon yourself to strike it, so we couldn't vote it. And that's why I take exception to.
Commissioner Frank, did you have?
Yes. Um, on Saturday, there was an event behind the Dairy Queen where, I'm going to say, uh, five or six of the fire departments were in that area.
Six.
Six. Uh, there were five cars volunteered by the different tow companies, and they trained on how to extricate people to get them out of these. Huh?
Extricate.
Extricate, okay. Extricate might mean another word, huh? Well, if they got them out of here, we're here, right?
I know that I've opened fire for forty years.
But I just want to, to make people aware that this happened, that we had these fire departments, they volunteer already. They're volunteers twenty-four seven, they went to Chad State for almost a week on lessons, and then they came over here and trained on what they learned. And I stood there and watched them just, I mean, they demolished these cars, they tore everything that ever was on that car. And, and, but the thing is, people who had, the, the volunteers that had never done this before, they got to get a hold of these things and just to get in there. The first time wouldn't be when they're out here and somebody's in the car needing them. And, and I just want to acknowledge that this went on, so thank you.
Steve, it's called the jaws, jaws of life.
Thank you, Commissioner Frank, for this.
Thank you.
Anything else? So entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Rollins, second by Commissioner Campbell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?